Good morning. Welcome to the Minnehawta County Commission Meeting for March 18th, 2025. I'm calling our meeting to order. And note for the record, we have a quorum of Commissioners present. Commissioner Blindberg is absent today. Just silence your cell phone, avoid embarrassment. And if you plan on speaking today, back in the far corner, and we do need your name for public record, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Look for a motion to approve our agenda. So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on any item in the consent agenda? The consent agenda contains our bills to be paid, personnel actions, notice and requests, and everything's available down in the Auditor's Office for public record. Anybody want to comment? Any Commissioner want to address any agenda items in the consent agenda? Look for a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Kipley.
Aye.
Bennigan.
Aye.
Hazeey.
Aye.
Hersky.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on now to our regular business. We have as our first presentation, a Minnehawta County 4-H Program Annual Presentation. We've got Nathan and Aubrey here. Welcome. Good to see you guys again.
Good morning. So we're here today. I'm Nathan. This is Aubrey. We're from the Minnehawta County 4-H Office. And we're here to give a presentation just kind of on what we've been doing this last year and what our plans are going forward. Oh, yeah.
That's March 4th.
I could talk about emergency medical services, but...
It's March 4th. Sorry, I don't normally do this. Did you just download?
Yeah.
Sorry. You guys can talk if you want.
Would you like us to just kind of talk through?
Sure.
Is that okay with you guys, Commissioners? Yeah, okay. Well, the first couple of slides are just explaining what 4-H is. So just for anyone who doesn't know, or just as a reminder, 4-H is structured where we are a federal program. And the federal government gives the land-grant universities in each state the ability to run extension in 4-H. And so that's SDSU in South Dakota. And then SDSU partners with the counties in South Dakota to offer extension programming and 4-H programming. And so that's kind of how we're structured. It's a very unique 4-H youth program where we have all three levels of government involved in our oversight and our funding. During this last programming year, some of our numbers, so we count enrolled numbers and outreach numbers. Enrolled numbers means that those kids went through the registration process, are enrolled 4-H members. Our mandate is to teach all the youth and provide educational opportunities to all the youth of Minnehawta County. So we don't just count those that participate in our programming as enrolled members, but we count youth that we reach through outreach programs as well. So with our enrolled numbers this last year, we had 379 enrolled. Our outreach were 5,698. So that equals to about 12% of the available youth in Minnehawta County. I believe that's about the same as what we hit last year. Our goal as an office is to reach 15 to 20%. The hard part about reaching that goal is that the youth in Minnehawta County increase every year. And so we have to increase our programming efforts, but Aubrey will share some of the stuff we're doing this year that'll hopefully help us reach that goal. Another big part of our program is our volunteers. So we have two classes of volunteers. Thank you. We have certified volunteers and short-term volunteers. So once again, certified volunteers are those that go through the registration process. They sign up through the same software our youth do. They receive background checks from South Dakota State University. They go through some training and then are considered a certified volunteer. Our short-term volunteers are those that don't go through that process, but still help contribute to the 4-H program. So a big example are the folks that come and help judge at our achievement days during the Sioux Empire Fair. What we like to do is try to provide some estimate on the return on investment of our volunteers. How we do that is we say that our certified volunteers give about 108 hours throughout the year. Because we're talking about they're doing monthly club meetings. Club meetings are usually an hour to two hours. They're prepping during that time. They're helping their families with registration and stuff throughout the month. They're usually at the fair for most of the fair. Several of them go to the South Dakota State Fair as well to help with their families there. So that's how we kind of arrive at that 108 hours. Our short-term volunteers, we say they serve about six hours. And really, that's kind of once again going off of our judges because in total, they're going to be helping us for about six hours. Add those up, and then what we do is we take that times what our hourly salary is. Because we're saying these are acting as extensions of the 4-H office. So this is what we're gaining as a monetary value instead of having to hire additional staff to fill these roles. So that just gives you an idea. These are the numbers from the 2000, what, 23 to 24? Because we do a weird thing where October 1st is the beginning of our 4-H year and September is the end of our 4-H year. So those are the numbers from last year. I'll turn it over to Aubrey now to talk about some of our programming.
Sounds good. Let me scroll this down. So some of our programming with our enrolled members, a lot of that happens during Achievement Days at the Sioux Empire Fair. So with our traditional enrolled members, we had 955 static display exhibits. So if you ever walk through the expo and see all of those projects with food, plants, art, clothing, all of that is included in there. And then 284 livestock exhibits this year. We had a really big beef show actually this year, which was exciting. We also started this year an entrepreneurship project pilot area. So with that, youth were able to come and apply through our office to have sort of a pop-up at our snack stands. We had two groups of kids who decided they wanted to have a pop-up selling lemonade. So they would come in for, I believe, an afternoon during the Sioux Empire Fair and be able to work through their entrepreneur project. So they both groups made profits on their lemonade sales and learned a lot about the business. They had to create a business plan, do presentations about it, and work through all of the paperwork and financials. So and they were rather young kids, still elementary age, most of them. So really getting a taste of what that could be to be a small business owner. And we're hoping that that continues to grow over the years and we continue to see youth getting excited about the possibilities that could happen. In other areas on a state level, Charlie Cody from our Colton Hustlers Club was the first overall senior in the state livestock judging competition. And we actually had two youth from our county be invited to compete at the national level. So that's very much a boon for us. And then Ava Healy from Hartford became the South Dakota 4-H rodeo ambassador. So we're very excited for those youth. In regards to our outreach programming, which as Nathan said, that encompasses quite a lot of what we do over the year. We do quite a bit within the Sioux Falls School Districts, Hartford and Brandon, with our Adopt a Cow and Chicks in the Classroom programs, teaching kids kind of the basics of agriculture, some aspects where it really does impact their own lives. Eggs, dairy, all of those things are very approachable to them, starting to help them understand where those come from and what that looks like in our community for agriculture and farmers. We also do a lot with STEM, Boys and Girls Club, and then also with several more of the after-school programs in the Sioux Falls School District. Have been coming into seven or eight of those on a monthly basis doing various STEM lessons with their sites. And then Nathan has also been doing a robotics club at Ben Rifle Middle School throughout the year, introducing them to programming and robotics. Large community events, we participate with Ag Days at the Washington Pavilion, which is coming up again this Saturday. Also the Sioux Empire Water Festival, which sees about 2,000 4th graders come through. And Women in Science, which sees around 800 8th grade girls. I'll turn it back over to Nathan.
So just looking ahead to the rest of this year, we're planning on doing all those similar events that we've been doing. In fact, we're delivering fertilized eggs to 11 classrooms on Thursday to start our first round of Chicks in the Classroom. Like Aubrey said, there's Ag Days at the Pavilion this Saturday. We will be there. Some of the things we're focusing on for this next year or two, though, are mastery opportunities. So this is for our enrolled kids, giving them a chance to really go to the next level with their projects that you might see at the Sioux Empire Fair. So for example, if a kid has been doing photography for a number of years, it's kind of reached, wants a different challenge. We have an opportunity for them to put together a portfolio of their work and have it judged a little closer, more critically. Similarly, with our baking, our fine arts, all those different static areas. Another thing we're going to focus on the next couple of years is shooting sports. There's actually an extension staff member who is a part of each outdoor campus, outdoor campus west and east. And so with the outdoor campus in Sioux Falls here, developing and building some indoor and outdoor shooting ranges, archery ranges, we're going to work with them about getting a 4-H shooting sports club going at the outdoor campus there. We have several others in the county as well, so just continuing to support them. One of the big outreach things that will be new for us this summer tentatively is we are in communication with the YMCA to come out to Camp Leif Erickson and do some programming there. That'll open us to a bunch of different kids that we aren't reaching through our other programming right now. And our goal is to try to be efficient. And so it's a lot easier to go to where the youth are than to try to get them to come to us. So that's why we partner with YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, the CLC with the school district, and all those different groups that have the kids there. So that's just a short presentation on what we've been doing this year. This is a photo of some of our kids doing some games after the beef show at the Sioux Empire Fair this last year. One of our great volunteers, Rachel Tinker, organized it. And it was a blast and just a chance for some of our kids and some of the adults to have some fun at the end of their show. So at this time, we'd be open to any questions you guys have for us about 4-H.
All right. Any public comment on this agenda item? Commissioners? Commissioner Kipley.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Just wanted to say I appreciate all the work you do. We are a growing community. So I get that when you want to serve a goal of a certain percent of kids, that keeps growing on you. Maybe could you expand a little bit on the emphasis on science and technology? We think of agriculture. I think some people still have a 20th century vision of agriculture, but modern agriculture has a lot of science, high-tech equipment. You mentioned robotics, genetics. Maybe just emphasize where STEM and agriculture meet and what's how, why that's part of your programming?
Yeah. So with the Adopt a Cow program and our Chicks in the Classroom program that we do with elementary school kids, that's just pure STEM and agriculture. So we go through the, with the Chicks in the Classroom, we go through how the egg develops. We do candling. We talk about the technology of an incubator and how an incubator replaces chickens, you know, and how you can incubate so many more eggs at a time. In addition to that, with the robotics, I just do a basic introduction to robotics because I'm not like a mechanical engineer or robotics expert. But one of the things that we are working on as a region, so as a southeast kind of county cohort, is setting up a day where we talk about precision egg for 4-Hers and for any youth who are interested in that. Because up on campus, on the SDSU campus, there is a precision egg building and department. And they are doing all kinds of stuff with robotics where you're using drones to check on your fields, to do digital mapping. You have your tractors and combines and everything are ran by computers and are keeping track of how much seed is dispersed and making maps of it and all kinds of crazy stuff. So that is actually one of the things that kind of as a region we're working on is putting some day camps together to bring some of the SDSU experts down here and giving them a chance to share their knowledge with kids.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Kipley about the disciplines of STEM and how critical they are to our youth. But boy, there's just nothing like getting in the dirt and learning by getting your hands dirty. So thank you for what you do, Nathan and Aubrey. Appreciate seeing you here again today. Additional comments? All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right, moving on. Second presentation is the Department of Equalization Annual Presentation. A lot of talk these days about property taxes, Chris.
Yep. Chris Lilla, Director of Equalization. I'd just start off by saying that that our staff is a highly professional and well-trained staff. Now, we are probably short of a sheriff's office, the only office within county employment that requires state licensing, where we have to get accredited and do our curriculum and our classes. And then we have to do continuing education to maintain that licensing. So with that, all of the certified appraisers take this oath, which is on there, which again, as I've stated in years past, this is something that our office takes to heart, that we will faithfully and impartially follow the Constitution and that we will assess all property according to its highest cash value to the best of our ability and judgment. So that is, that is something that our office does do and we take great pride in that. And we admit failures when we're wrong and we make corrections when and if we're wrong. So it's just, it really capitalizes and puts us our mission and what we do. So, so moving on just to the next slide. What do we do? We maintain and update all county data. We assess all real estate for property taxation. And again, that's county-wide. So it doesn't matter if it's a trailer house or if it's ag land, a commercial building, rental properties, owner-occupies, anything that's in the county, boundaries, we are responsible for. We track and record all sales data. We establish all growth. We monitor and create TIF districts and track that increment value. We administer the majority of exemption programs, work with planning and development for future projects and reappraisals. We maintain and update all the county data. It's the largest county, as everyone is well aware. We have an estimated 212,000 people and we have just over 78,600 parcels that we, that are active. So that number is, changes daily. There's combines where we put parcels together. There's replats where one parcel is split into 10 or 20. So it's an accordion all year long of what's going on. But as of last, we're just over 78,600 parcels. Every parcel has a detailed working file associated with it. That's mainly in our CAMA system, our computer-assisted mass appraisal program. That's where all of the characteristics of improvements are stored, loaded, photos, sketches. All of that data is in there. It's assigned identification numbers and map ID numbers. Every parcel has the current property information, the property history, the sales history, the value history, sketches, as I mentioned. When we jump in, all the photos, inspection notes, every time an appraiser or a building permit is taken out, there's notes put in as to what they did, what they viewed, what they saw, what was completed, what wasn't done this year to follow up next year for completion. All of that is tracked and kept through those logs. Then we jump into the tax side where we take all of those values and put those into the encode system, which is where we then apply the owner occupancy, the elderly freeze, the disabled vets, the ag exemptions. The list goes on and on. Sales, that's a, that's a big one for our office. 2023, we had over 6,170 transfers. In '24, we're at 7336. So that did trend up a little bit, which is kind of ironic. To me, it feels like it kind of slowed down a little bit, but it did go up. The actual transfers now, that doesn't mean that every property is a sale. That's a transfer. So if a husband adds a wife's name, that's a transfer. If somebody passes away and they do a deed change to remove a name, that's a transfer. So all of those require us to process through. We'll, we'll continue to record and trend market sales and make annual adjustments accordingly, depending on where they go. And this year is a prime example. Generally, we're tracking, we've been tracking the market up and up and up and up and up and up. This last year's sales, we actually had neighborhoods that we tracked down. There's, there's a number of neighborhoods that, that did come down in value from last year's value. So not every time are we the bad guys. 2024 assessment. So again, state law says that we have to assess all properties on a county-wide basis. Our level of assessment has to be between 85 and 100. Generally, we start out lower than 85. That just, so when we end at 90 this year or last year, and then the market goes up, that's actually like pushing our level of assessment down. And generally, we've been under 85. That's our starting point. This year is the first time, I think, in probably 14, 15 years, that we've actually started the year in compliance. That means that the market didn't run away from us last year's assessed values as strongly. We started out at 85.21%. So doesn't mean that we could stop. There's still neighborhoods and areas that need increases, neighborhoods that need decreases, things like that. When we make those changes on an assessment level, we try to target to be, move our level of assessment into that 90 to 94% range. This year, we did end countywide at 90.3, which indicates an average market increase, again, average. Everything in the county, the average increase was 5.9 or 0.9%. So it's much lower than what it's been. Some perspective on history, if we go back, it was 5.7 years ago, then 6.3, then 18.8 when we hit COVID. Then the next year, it was 14.4. Last year was 12.9. This year, we're at 5.09. So you can kind of see a bell curve. The market has definitely slowed on its aggressive value gains. So again, we value all property. We're required to look at three approaches to value, the cost approach, the income approach, and the sales comparison approach. Every property that's improved begins with the cost approach. That is, what does it cost to construct that improvement brand-new today? Period. That's the start of any, any structure. And that uses Marshall and Swift as a basis for the, for those costs. So the appraisers gather all that information. What's the siding? What's, you know, what's it constructed of? What's the quality of that? That gets put in and it generates a value to cost new, to build new today. That's the cost approach. Then it runs through depreciation tables and it starts depreciating depending on the age and the condition of that property. That's kind of the final of the cost approach. Then we get into the market approach, which is where we now take those values, compare them to sale prices of like properties in their neighborhoods. And that tells us, do we need to increase these values, decrease these values, or are our values okay? That's the sales comparison approach. The income approach is generally used on income-producing capable properties, specifically apartments, where we can, we can take their revenues and their incomes and their expenses and we can capitalize that into a projection of what is that capitalized market value on an income approach. And we do do that on a lot of our apartments to validate, you know, if they, specifically if they want to appeal their value, we'll, we'll get their P&Ls and we'll reconstruct their, their earnings statements and their losses and expenses and validate that and then compare that against our values to see if our market or our modeling is trending higher than what the income-producing capability is. And if it is, then we've got an issue and we can make some adjustments if we need to. Again, we track all development growth. Growth until next year has been any new value added in the year, any new construction. If there's a new house built, you know, it's a $500,000 house. That $500,000 is considered growth. Growth is compiled throughout the year and at the end, it's reported as a percent. Minnehawta County has had tremendous growth over the years. 2023, the county growth as a percentage was 3.2. 2024, we were at 3.86. And this year, we're looking to be right at 3. So when you take 3% on 20-some billion of value, that's generally, the higher the number, you see your percentages decrease every year, but it's, it's ultimately a higher value because it's a percentage of a larger number. But we're, we're still hanging at that 3 range this year. Next year, with Senate Bill 216, I don't think that's going to be the case with the limitation on what we can consider as growth. So I would, I don't know where that's going to go. We'll wait and see next year. So again, we administer all exempt programs. Just examples, the owner occupied, that's probably the biggest one. Anytime a person owns their property and it make it their principal residence, if they make application, they get a reduction in the school portion of the levy for school funding. That's that, that's that difference in, in taxes. They get a discount on that. The, the other non-owner occupied and commercial basically make up that difference in the school aid formula. We, along with the Treasurer's Office, administer the elderly freeze. The Treasurer's Office takes all applications. They verify the incomes, thresholds that they haven't exceeded that. And if they pass that benchmark, then they send it to us. And then we validate the valuation to make sure they're not in excess. And if they, they qualify, then we administer that moving forward and, and basically freeze their values that they're taxed against. We manage the discretionary formula. That's for commercial development, you know. Most of the small towns have adopted resolutions. Sioux Falls City has adopted resolutions. So in essence, when a commercial building is constructed, and this is pretty high level because they're all different, it starts on a formula where generally the first year following completion, that building is not taxed. It's, it's 100% exempt on the first year following completion. The second year after completion, it's taxed at 20% with 80% exempt. Then it moves to 40%, 60, 60, 40, 80, 20. And then on that sixth year, fifth year, it's, it's fully assessed and fully taxed. It's just a, it's a benefit to encourage businesses to construct and build and give them a little time to get into their business model to start earning revenue before they're, they're bankrupted through taxation. Disabled vets, again, we, we're getting a lot of those. Those are where a veteran is permanently and totally service-connected disabled. If they make application and they're rated that way, they come to us. Right now, it's currently the first $200,000 of value is exempt. We track the renewable energy. This is not an application process. For us, basically, it's geothermal. If we discover there's geothermal in a property, the first four years of that added value is exempt. And then on the fifth year, it becomes taxable. And if it happens to be in a commercial, then there's a limitation of up to 70% of that value. We handle all the religious charitable benevolent exemptions, the agricultural exemption. If a property owner or a relative to the third degree lives on a farm site with farm buildings, the first 10,000 of those farm buildings of value is exempt. We manage that. There's no application or anything for that. We do that automatically. As well as additional programs. We've got the disabled vets. We've got, I don't have any but homestead exemptions. If, if we had that, I get a lot of inquiry on that and I usually steer people away from that one because there's a limitation on income. And then basically, you don't have to pay your taxes, but they continue to accrue as a lien. So I tell people, if you want to do that and you qualify, that's great. But if you've got anybody you want to leave your property to or heirs, you're, you're not helping them. And most people, after they find out the details of that, 20 years, I've never had anybody sign up for it. I have a lot of inquiries because they think they don't have to pay their taxes. But this last year, what did we do? You know, we started physical review, which hadn't been done for many, many, many years here in the county. I think we're on our third year of that now. This last year, we did physically review, which means we went to every property This last year, we did physically review, which means we went to every property in eleven neighborhoods. Eight in Sioux Falls City and we did three townships. So every farm has been, in the township, has been physically walked, buildings verified, measured. You know, we're finding a lot of buildings that are missing that have been on the tax rolls for a long time that we didn't know were torn down. We also completed some in Brandon, Del Rapids and Crooks. We do assessor training. Now that we are fully staffed, we have shifted some of the appraisers around to, to delegate and split that workload. It's really been beneficial. We were able to move a couple of appraisers into Sioux Falls, give our rural appraisers some small towns. It, it has really helped us maximize what we can get done in a year. We're getting more reviews done. And then Beacon, you know, since we brought Beacon on board, that has been a very valuable asset for our office and for the public. Not only is it solvent and, and self-sufficient in the expense to pay for itself, but the staff savings is almost immeasurable. You know, the, the phone calls that we get throughout the year, the, the property card requests that we got in years past and the information, anybody can get it twenty-four, seven now at their home. So it's, the staff can concentrate on their job and, and keep up, which has helped, helped us from needing the request to increase personnel. Goals this year, obviously, we're going to continue to do reappraisals. That's our focus as well as building permits in the fall. Where we target those is every year when we do our analysis, we look at several measures. We look at the, the median, the average values. We look at the price-related differentials, which is a measure of vertical equity within neighborhoods. We look at the C O D, the standard deviation. C O D is the primary one, which is how big of a bull's eye do we have? You know, if we've got a tight bull's eye in a neighborhood and we've got massive sales, I can make adjustments with confidence. If my bull's eye is this big and I have to shift anything up or down, you're, you're moving to the extreme. So we're concentrating on the areas that have the biggest dispersion from the median of, of sale prices, because that's where the problems are. That's where we need to physically review. The cats have got out of the pen. We need to bring them back in. So we're working from our worst to our best. Building permits, obviously, it, Minnehaha County continues to grow. Every property that has a building permit must be physically inspected by the appraiser. Interior inspections, if we can get into it, if it's a house. And obviously, we try and get into every single property. Sometimes that's unavailable. People don't let us always come in, so then we have to make our estimations. We continue to do desktop reviews, which is just combing through the data, looking for anomalies, outliers, things like that, whether it be grades or conditions or, or years built or effective ages. It's just a continuous process and, and we're getting pretty, pretty clean on our data, but there's always room for improvement. We're going to look at doing some rebuilding of the commercial building model, finiting that. Some of that took place this year already. You know, we did that kind of en masse a couple of years ago where all the commercial properties were being valued against all of the commercial properties. Our first step was to break that apart and compare banks against banks, apartments against apartments, gas stations against gas stations. So only sales of those affect values of those. That's been done. Now we're getting into some finite this year. Again, as I mentioned, we did apartments. Well, that's all apartments. That's four units to three hundred units. That was our first build. This year, we took the step to split some of those smaller ones away from the larger ones because there's an obvious difference. And when we did that and we look at that and we compare the sales of that, what that, what that trended to is our smaller units needed some substantial increases to get us to the sale prices. So that's the bulk of our big increases this year. But all in all, I don't think it's been too bad. We'll see what shakes out at the county board, but right now I think we've got four appeals in Sioux Falls City for those. So, which obviously is a kind of a grievance and I, and I understand that, but we also have, have our job to do and they've been getting a discount for quite some time. That, that wasn't validated and we're getting into some of that micro stuff now to, to dial it in. So growing pains and growing pains, but that's what I've got. If anybody's got any questions.
Any public comment on this agenda? All right, commissioners, comments, questions? Commissioner Benninga?
Chris actually had this conversation last night at Ace Hardware in front of about ten people, but which was less than comfortable. Someone was discussing the whole issue of the, frankly, they'd been reevaluated, but they refused to let anybody in the house. And they said that, of course, their valuations were too high because of the fact that they didn't have the same interiors as their neighbors had. How do you do that when in fact you can't get in and they won't let you in?
Well, in all properties, someone has been in there at some time.
Right.
And, and on the reviews, the data is already living there. This much finished, this much space, this many bathrooms. Typically, when there's building permits taken out, people generally will let us in or we can get enough information from that building permit. In the event that they don't let us in, we'll plug it in. We'll use any listing data. If there's been a sale on it to try and validate, you know, because they're happy when, when a property sells to take all the interior pictures of the basement. And so we'll, we'll, and we're allowed to use that information. So we do the best that we can. If we're not allowed in, A, whatever was in there is probably going to be status quo. It's going to stay that way. Now, we are going to look at it and, and if it's on a fence of like a quality, you know, that, you know, it could be an average or an average plus quality of home. You know, it, it could fall either way in the judgment. Well, in those, we're not going to get, give the benefit of the doubt to the taxpayer because we weren't allowed to see that. We're going to fall on that plus side. Because we, we don't know. But everything is done. We don't, we don't just shoot the moon. We don't, you know, we can't look in windows. But if I don't have basement finish in your house and I'm there and I'm going to do the physical inspection and we're going to walk around the house and I glance down at your basement windows and I can see the window jams are finished and the sills are there and the curtains are there and you don't let me in, I'm going to assume you have ninety percent basement finish. And then if you don't like that, you can appeal. And if you want to appeal, we'll be happy to come and look. And if we're wrong, we'll correct it.
The other question that came up in that conversation was the fact that they indicated that they had had water damage in their lower level. How do you handle that?
Again, we'll go in there and if that, if that was finished space that had water damage that has been removed, we'll, we'll go in there and we'll remove that, that square footage of finish out, which reduces that value. We'll, we'll do that anytime.
Thank you. Chris, what's the process if, and I've had my son, for example, say, I got a letter, I think. I can't remember. How, how do you notify a citizen that you want to go fit to a physical inspection?
Yeah, when, when we do, with the building permits, we don't really give notification. Because that's, we have such a short window. We don't have phone numbers. We don't have ways to contact them. The building permits are when we hit that season, we're, we're taking our stack and we're going all over. When it comes to the review, we do mail merge a letter notifying them that we're conducting a physical review in their neighborhood. And each appraiser gets their stack by their neighborhood and they, they, we try to mail them out. They'll, they'll identify, you know, I can do these next three blocks next week. So they'll mail that three blocks worth out. So that we're not mailing them, you know, seven hundred of them. And then we're not getting there for three months. So we try and do that timely. So when you get your letter, my appraiser should be there within the next week.
So you're going to get a letter and then somebody's going to knock on the door?
Yep. So we mail a letter saying, saying we're coming and this is the process. And then if they, if there's no one there and no response, we'll leave a tag.
How does your staff identify themselves?
Oh yeah. Most of them wear the logo. They all have their, their badges.
And when they go into the house?
That's placarded.
Are they going to be measuring rooms? Are they going to, what, what do they do when they're in the house? How long should it take?
Most of the time, if the data is, appears accurate, they're, they're not going to remeasure everything. They've already got the sketch. They've got the property card. They know how many toilets are in there, what the flooring is. Most of the time, it's, it's very, it's non-invasive. I mean, we're not opening closets and drawers and things like that. It's usually about a, a ten to fifteen minute. They'll walk the perimeter, identify and, and I mean, it doesn't take, they're pretty good at, at saying, well, my sketch says this is ten feet. Well, that looks shorter than ten feet. If it looks shorter, they're going to measure that. And if it turns out to be eight, they'll start making those adjustments on their sketch if it's more. But they'll, they'll visually verify all of that around. And if there's anything questionable, they'll remeasure that. When it comes to the interior, they're going to walk through, count the plumbing fixtures. They're going to look at the flooring. They're going to look at the condition inside. You know, is it plaster? Is it sheet rock? And they're basically verifying what's already there. And any deviations, they annotate those changes. When it comes to the basement finish, that's where the majority of measuring will, will be done, either with a tape or with a laser. They'll measure the finished areas or the unfinished areas, depending on which is the majority and, and record all of that information and come back and compile it into the CAMA system.
Ten fifteen minutes usually? Normal eight to five is when they're doing these things. So.
Yep. Eight thirty to five generally.
And if somebody gets their valuation and they call and you ask them, can we send an appraiser out?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We want our data. We want the information that you're being valued and taxed against accurate.
Commissioner Kipling?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few questions, Chris. Remind us how long you've been the equalization director?
Here?
Yeah.
Six years?
Yeah, with some time in Brookings County before that. But so we've got six years. I, I just think we're headed in the right direction. You've really got a methodology that's, uh, just, that's going well. Maybe to quantify that again, almost eighty thousand parcels and remind us how many appeals we're going to hear in April or that?
April, I don't know.
The local board level now?
This afternoon, we're done this afternoon. It's going to be a short afternoon. I, I've got in Sioux Falls City, I've got ten residential appeals. And one of them is already resolved. It's just because of timing that we're, we're going to make the recommendation there. So it's really nine appeals this afternoon of residential and I believe we have four commercial.
And, and obviously you get a lot more inquiries than that. And, but would you, is it fair to say that when you get a chance to sit down with a person and kind of walk through the math and show the comparable sales, you're usually able to kind of preempt appeals?
A lot of times, but we also, I mean, we do get a lot of inquiries, you know, hey, we're, we're thinking about appealing. First thing we're going to do is, is can we come and review the property? And if, and the appraisers have been running, they're going out and looking. And if there's something that isn't right, we can make that correction and then say, yeah, you know, we mailed you an assessment of five hundred thousand. It should have been four forty. Are you okay with that? And if you are, we do it as a correction. What we know now, if we would have known it then, that would have been your value. So, so we do have, we're a little more correction-heavy than we are appeal. But then on, on a lot of them, most of the time, it's just education and information when they, we sit down with them and show them the sales of their properties and how we got to the values that can't, most of them walk away. Once they get that understanding that they are being treated fair, they are being treated equal and they are not assessed higher than market value.
Yeah. So we appreciate the, the customer service that goes into that. Trish, if you could go to page one forty-one on the PDF, I had just a question up to the heading, real estate assessments and market adjustments. Couple more. There we go. That slide. It's dangerous to do math on the fly with you here, Chris, but may, maybe you could just walk us through. We have this eighty-five percent to a hundred percent range. And for example, this year, twenty twenty-four, it looks like we went up by five point oh nine. So that means we have individual parcels went by, up by more than that. And we had some that went up. And you even mentioned that some actually had a negative, went, went down this year, but all of that averages to five point oh nine. Looking ahead to next year, we're going to have to cap that at three percent. So our county assessed value needs to be three percent. Do you know how that's going to be implemented looking ahead to next year?
I did get minor clarification on that with Senate Bill two sixteen. And my understanding is, is that it's the, only the owner occupied that's capped.
Okay. Yes, I, I follow you there.
So what's going to happen is, is every class of property, there's going to be for owner occupied, we had this much value in the previous year and this is our value this year. And that, that difference in value is split into two. How much of that total value change is growth? And how much of that total value change is reappraisal? So as an example, I think last year we had eight hundred and two million worth of growth. That is a number that you are able as a board to increase your budget. The other two billion of value increase was market. You can't use that. So what I understand is they're looking at that total. And if, and then so when the auditor gets that value, if we happen to be, if the owner occupied shares, so this is, that five is, is all classes. But if the owner occupied happened to be three point five percent, they're going to have to take point five percent of that away and put it on the non-owner occupied. It's, it's going to shift.
Commercial and ag.
Commercial, no, it won't go to ag.
No, not ag. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it won't go to ag. That's a misconception. Ag is in its own bucket.
Okay, sure. Production value.
If, if ag values go up, ag levies go down.
So it's basically owner occupied and?
But it's going to shift from owner occupied to non-owner occupied.
And will the, uh, will there be any change? Uh, I guess to try to turn this into a, a brief seminar on taxable factor and this eighty-five percent to a hundred percent. Is there any incentive for you to shoot low and go to eighty-five percent? Or what's the, can you just explain what's the state mechanism with that taxable factor? Why wouldn't we just shoot for eighty-five percent all the time rather than that ninety to ninety-four midpoint? Or why don't we go for a hundred percent? And what are kind of the trade-offs in that with the, the state taxable factor? If you could brief us on that?
Yeah, that's a great question. Basically, I like to be at that ninety to ninety-four percent. And again, it depends on that coefficient of dispersion. How big is my bull's eye? So my median sales, if, 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 if my median sale price, I'm sitting at ninety percent and I have a C O D of four, that means ninety-five percent of my properties are going to be within two percent above ninety-one and two percent below. That's that spread, four percent. So my, my ratios, meaning my value to sale price is going to be ninety-three to eighty-nine. Ninety-five percent of them are going to fall there. I don't want to be at a hundred. Because if I'm at a, if, if I'm assessing at a hundred, I'm literally right now can tell you fifty percent of my sales I have over assessed. Fifty percent. Now, if I have a one C O D, that would be fine, but we never have that. So I like to be in the, in the middle of that. And the same thing, if I was at eighty-five, if I was assessing as a median at eighty-five, I'm literally telling you half of my sales, I'm undervalued. I'm, I'm out of that, that margin. So we like to be between eighty-five and it, well, we have to be between eighty-five and a hundred. So I like to stay right in that sweet spot of ninety to ninety-four. When it comes to the taxes, that's where the equalization factor comes in. And that's a misnomer by the public. They think we assess at eighty-five percent. No. That's an equalization number. So the way that works, and I just explained this to the city yesterday. If you've got three counties, we'll say Moody, Minnehaha and Lincoln County, they assess at a hundred percent in Moody. We assess at ninety here. Lincoln County assesses at eighty-five. You think they're doing them a favor, you know? Basically, what that means is I got a hundred thousand dollar building. Moody County costs a hundred thousand to build. They're going to say it's a hundred thousand. Minnehaha costs a hundred thousand to build. I'm going to say it's worth ninety. Lincoln County costs a hundred. They're going to say it's worth eighty-five thousand. Who, who's getting the better deal? Well, everyone thinks Lincoln County because they're only assessing at eighty-five percent. That's the assessed value. When it comes to the taxable value, then that level of assessment is eighty-five is divided by that level. So down in Lincoln County, eighty-five percent divided by eighty-five or eighty-five divided by eighty-five is a factor of one. So on their tax bill, they got a hundred thousand dollar building. They're assessing at eighty-five thousand. Their taxable value is eighty-five thousand because their factor is one. When we go up to Moody County, they're at a hundred. So they say it's a hundred thousand dollar building. Eighty-five divided by a hundred is point eight five. Taxable value is eighty-five thousand. Different assessments, same taxable value. Here, if we're assessing at ninety percent, you divide eighty-five by ninety. I think it's point nine four four. Take point nine four four times ninety. It's, it's eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. It rounds. It's eighty-five thousand. So you've got three different directors assessing at different levels, but when it comes to the taxable, it's equalized. We're all taxed at the same.
Yeah, I think that's, I, I appreciate that. And I, I guess I was leading into thinking that if we had to, if on this screen, our average market adjustment had to be three percent, that that taxable factor would then adjust it out. But you're clarifying for me that the Senate Bill sixteen is just going to cap that three percent on owner occupied. So it will just shift to the commercial. But okay. So yeah, I just think we got to game out the actual math here. And I'm just kind of disappointed, just to be frank with my colleagues here. I'm just kind of disappointed with the the level of detail we got out of the legislative process and, and not enough homework was done on actually gaming out how this would work, how it would be implemented. And I just think we're going to be left holding the bag here at the county to, to do our math and, and show our work to our constituents of what they really save or if it just gets shifted around for the next five-year period. The last question I'd have though, Chris, is again, kind of a testament to the professionalism and work of your office. One of the other things that came out of the legislative session related to One of the other things that came out of the legislative session related to counties merging different services or working together on things, have we got any inquiries to our equalization office? I think that the legislation that I'm speaking of is allowing another county to contract with another county for joint efforts on an equalization director. I, I just think you're well thought of in the equalization community. So I know you've got sixty-five colleagues that probably ask you for informal advice. But would we ever look to formalize that, those relationships with any other county?
I, there's always a potential. I, I know some counties, they struggle getting directors or getting staff in. And what, the county's got a job to do. And if they can't get anybody in to do it, how are they gonna do that? And I think that's where that really comes into play, that, hey, we can contract. I know Hamlin County had contracted with the director up from Clear Lake to go over and help assist. And now she's actually gone back and became their director. There's also another, there's two counties that have one director already that's been in place. They've merged those. I couldn't imagine trying to keep two sets of books. But, so there's always been a cohesive unit within, within the assessors where we, we work and share, where, where, and if we can. I mean, I've gone down to, to Yankton to assist them for a couple of days, get their, their marketing done, you know? Got permission from, from the board to do that, to, to help them. But as far as formalizing that, I guess time would tell. And that would be ultimately your decision if, if you wanted to share our expertise on a, on a formal basis with sharing expenses or things like that. Who knows what the future will bring.
All right, thank you.
Chris, the only thing I wanna add more of a caution, because I think there's some misconception on Senate Bill two sixteen, and correct me if I get this wrong, but because Senate Bill two sixteen limits the increase to three percent, that's three percent of the total valuation of fifteen billion. It's not three percent on any individual property. They could go up, they could go down.
That is correct. As a matter of fact, Kelloland had an, had an article on that is completely misleading and false. And they had realtors on there saying, this is great. When somebody buys a home, they're already gonna know that next year their tax bill can't be more than three percent. That is false.
Okay.
That is false.
We can't say that enough.
If they do their basement finish, that they can only go up three percent. That is false. If your neighborhood market needs to go up ten percent, your value is going to go up ten percent. It's only at the total value change for budgeting and levy establishment. It, it's false. Blatantly false. And I emailed revenue and said they need to get ahead of that.
Commissioner Heisey, did you have something?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Chris. I know the local board of appeals is meeting this afternoon. I'll be in attendance to observe. I wonder if you could speak to that local board, what the process is? And if someone does want to appeal down the road, what, what would you advise them to do to make their case adequately?
First and foremost, contact our office. Get the information. That's the first thing. After that, the sky's the limit for them to make their appeal. Appraisals are, are great. Now, I caution on refi appraisals. Some are valid, some are not. I've always cautioned that. And the reason I say that is because if you bought your house for four hundred thousand twenty years ago and now you owe two hundred thousand and you get a refi appraisal, what do you think your appraisal is gonna come in at? It's gonna come in at two hundred and ten or two hundred and forty thousand, even though it might be worth six hundred thousand today. All they've gotta do is, is cover the loan amount to validate that refi. Nobody's gonna put their neck out and, because all of a sudden, if it defaults and it's not worth that, that appraiser can be in trouble. So I caution refi appraisals, not all of them. But there's a lot of those that, that don't capture that true value on a refi. A true appraisal, if you purchased a home or, or higher, that has definitely more weight. Or if it's a recent purchase, the purchase price obviously is market value. If we're over that, we're wrong in this year. Not what you paid for it last year. But if you just bought your house this year and our assessed value that you just received is higher than what you paid for it, and it was an open market sale, meaning it was advertised, there was no relationship, there was no pressure to buy or sell, and there was money exchanged, you could contact our office and we will automatically give you what we call a good sale. We'll give you that sale price for a year. But as far as appealing, any information, do their research. You know, they can bring appraisals, they can get broker price opinions, BPOs. Find comparable properties in their neighborhood. Do their own work and come and present whatever they think. I mean, they can come in and say, I appeal because I don't like Chris Lilla. And I think he's wrong and, okay?
Well, I have one follow-up question. You had said earlier that there's approximately ten appeals this afternoon. I think maybe you could clarify, are those all residential?
Ten residential, and then I believe we have four commercial properties.
And I, I do understand that the number of appeals has been decreasing year after year, especially during your tenure as the director. What do you attribute those decreases to? Is it certain processes you've implemented or better public education?
All of the above. I would say the biggest thing is data cleanup, getting consistency within the data, getting land values equalized, getting grades equalized, getting some of the physical reviews done. Again, where the CODs are out of whack is where typically we'll have the most appeals because our bullseye is too big, you know? That, our public outreach, well, I wouldn't say necessarily public outreach, but our openness to work with the public. I mean, I love to educate and work with the public and, and explain where and how and why we get that information to set their values. And ninety-five out of a hundred times, once they see and understand, I mean, I've had people come in yelling at me. And when they left, they said, I was so wrong and I appreciate what you do and I understand how you got it. I'm, I've got no appeal. A lot of it's just education.
And Chris, I know just from experience that I've given your name to like Kiwanis or Lions Group, and you've gone there and they've been very appreciative of the work you've done. So I'm gonna move this on, so.
Just capping it for owner occupied at three percent for five years, what happens in year six from your perspective? Well, we have, I mean, we don't know what the market's gonna do. But if you played that out over the past five years, you would just see a jump in year six, wouldn't you?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Then you're gonna see a dramatic shift back to owner occupied and a lessening on the commercial.
So I think we've got a time bomb on our hands that we're gonna have to get a real legislative fix to this within that five-year period. But just my final thought, Mr. Chair, thank you.
So I appreciate your explanation of the coefficient of dispersion. That's very informative. So thank you. And thank you for your staff and, and the work you do, Chris. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
You bet. All right, authorize chair to sign a contract between JDC and Lutheran Social Services for Shelter Care and Reception Center. Mr. Gravitt, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jamie Gravitt, Juvenile Detention Center. Before you today is a three-year contract with the Lutheran Social Services to provide shelter care services and reception center services. As you may remember, shelter care is designed to handle lower-level youth for short periods of time while their court is going on. The reception center is utilized to reunify parents with kids that can be released so that police officers are not tied up trying to find the parents and, and then reunifying them. We have staff at, at the LSS that can do that for us and it gets them back out on the street where they're needed. There is a cost increase of four percent in the second and third year. Reminder, we pay for the, we're, this contract shows the full amount as, as if we paid for everything and we didn't bill for anything. What actually happens is we get billed for actual costs month to month. If, if the state utilizes beds, that, that money is collected by Lutheran Social Services and then our bill is lowered. They get reimbursements for school lunch program, our bill is lowered, stuff like that. We individually bill the counties that use shelter care at actual cost. The state pays at approximately eighty percent of actual cost. And that's all due to licensing and state rates that will be paid. The other thing to remember is if we did not have these services, a majority of these kids would then be in JDC. So we wanna try and keep the lower-level kids from interacting with the higher-level kids so that they don't become better criminals. And, and we just think it's a beneficial service in the long run. Therefore, I'd ask for you to authorize the chair to approve this contract.
Public comment on this agenda item. Commission, questions, actions?
I would make a motion to approve and just make a comment that JDC is trying to get people in the right place at the right time to make sure that the results are good rather than being charged as an adult later on in life, which is a significant cost to everybody.
So we have a motion to approve, looking for a second.
Second.
Motion is second, further conversation.
Mr. Chair, just a, a quick clarification, Jamie. I know the contract says the county will fund up to four point five million dollars over three years. Historically, have, has the county been charged up to that threshold? Or has it typically been lower?
Historically, they're, like I said, historically, the Department of Social Services, the Department of Corrections uses beds. They also get reimbursements for other things. That reduces our cost. So it's the actual cost is what we pay their billing. But what that, what that budget shows is as if we never sold a bed, they never collected a dollar, and we had to pay the full cost. That would be the full cost. But we pay actual cost of what is billed month to month.
Gotcha, thank you. And one quick follow-up question. Could you speak to the family reunification process, what it looks like on the ground?
So usually they'll, they'll work to find the parent. You know, they might be at work, they might be wherever. But they're making that contact with the parent, having them come to the facility to pick up the youth. While they're at the facility, they, they discuss any issues that they may be having and work to make referrals to community agencies that could help them through those issues. The other thing that is helpful is the reception center gets used as what we call a cooldown period. If there's major issues happening within the home, we can remove the child for a period of time, let everybody get calmer heads, then reunify them together, refer them, again, refer them to services to help them through those family issues that are going on in the home, so.
And, and one more quick question, if I may. I imagine probably depends on the, the level of offense that they've committed. But are, are those kids staying at the center twenty-four seven? Are they going back home for a period of time and?
In, in the shelter care, it is twenty-four seven. They do have the ability, if the judge authorizes it, to go to their homeschool during the day and come back at night. Or if they have a job, they could go to a job and come back. It, it all depends on staff availability and transportation availability. The reception center is getting them home in a, a short amount of time.
Thank you.
Call the roll.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider a motion to approve solid waste permit number twenty-five zero one for the purpose of a rubble site on the property legally described as tract one Mueller addition north half, the northwest quarter, section thirty-four, T one oh one, NR fifty-one, W All Lake Township. Morning, Mason.
Morning, Commissioners. Mason Stefan from the County Planning Office. As explained by the chair, Mueller Palits has submitted an application for a new solid waste permit on the property addressed as four six three, four nine, two sixty-seventh street, which is approximately a half mile west of the Sioux Falls Regional Landfill. The Minnehaha County Solid Waste Ordinance does require, defines tree branches and other similar materials as rubble and defines a rubble site as a site where rubble is deposited and therefore a solid waste permit is required for this tree grinding operation. Mueller Palits did obtain a solid waste permit in November of twenty twenty-three. However, they did recently amend their existing conditional use permit for this operation. So as you can see up on the screen, conditional use permit twenty-five eleven to amend conditional use permit twenty-three fifty-one was heard and approved by the Minnehaha County Planning Commission on February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. And since the Minnehaha County Solid Waste Ordinance does not have a permit amendment process, the petitioner is required to obtain this new solid waste permit and change the conditions on that already approved solid waste permit from November of twenty twenty-three. Staff has reviewed the application and submitted materials to ensure that the permit complies with ordinance seventeen ninety-one, which is the regulation of solid waste. And staff does recommend approval of solid waste permit twenty-five oh one with proposed conditions. And then action is needed to either approve or deny solid waste permit twenty-five oh one from Mueller Palits rubble site. So I'll just go through a few pictures here just to remind the board of the property we're looking at here. So this is the location map. This is old imagery from twenty twenty-three, so this is before the site changes took place. And this is the new site plan submitted. So there is a new berm on the north side of the property, which does help screen from the road. And a lot of these trees have been taken out, but there is still a substantial shelter belt along the west side of the property. The main change on the site plan is just to include this area here in the middle for blended wood waste, which is the purpose of this amendment to allow Mueller Palits to accept blended wood waste on top of their already accepted trees and other lumber-like, other clean lumber-like trees. So this is looking to the northwest. This is the nearest non-agricultural use and electrical substation. And then the nearest residential use is over a half mile away farther to the northwest there. This is looking from the electrical substation driveway back to the southeast. And so this would be the location of the property with that shelter belt of trees there. And then this is looking to the southwest, which would be the nearest residential property there, another half mile to the southwest. This is looking directly to the west from the petitioner's driveway and then looking east from their driveway as well. And it's kind of hard to see here because of the snow. But one of the issues that did come up in the original permit for the conditional use permit and solid waste permit was about materials being dragged onto the highway. And the petitioner has paved with asphalt, you can, the first hundred and fifty feet with asphalt. It's a little bit harder to see, but you can see it's the darker asphalt color there. And then this is looking actually into the operation. In the day I was there, they were grinding. So you can see the new piles that they were grinding there with the guard shack here. And there is a gate that does secure the facility when no one is on the site. And so I will go back to the site plan and I am available for any questions from.
Any public comment on this agenda item? I know the petitioner, well, it's not petition, I guess, but the applicant is here. If you'd like to address us, that would be fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And many of you who have seen several times discussing this location and this project. But just a couple of quick notes. In the conditional use permit process, it's estimated that this will be an additional eight trucks per week. So it's not a significant change in traffic.
Would you just identify yourself?
I'm sorry, yep, Paul Cheddar from the Boyce Law Firm.
Thanks, Paul.
Representing the applicant. The owner of the applicant is not here. Owner of the property is here, Henry. Henry and his daughter Rebecca are both employees of, of the petitioner. It's a misnomer to talk about, excuse me, clean wood versus blended wood or unclean wood. What we're talking about is wood from construction projects or wood that might have spray paint or a little bit of stain on it that otherwise is not denoted as being clean. And the, the applicant has users of this product in ag applications, bedding for dairies and hog facilities, wood chips for using for the composting of animal carcasses, or relatively growing uses of these wood products. So you're not gonna see a fundamental change in any way of the operation of the facility. I think planning staff can speak to how great a job the applicant has done in living up to its promises to be a good neighbor out there despite concerns that were raised a couple of years ago through the permitting process. But we feel we've lived up to all promises made and would stand behind what Mason may have to comment on that because we've worked closely with him to address issues that, that were brought to our attention at the outset related to mud on the road. And we've solved that through the pavement of that when the conditions allowed and also having our employees in those days that that was a problem two years, nearly two years ago, excuse me, a year ago, addressed that. So happy to answer other questions that you might have, but feel this is a benefit to the community and that we can accept more wood products to keep it out of the landfill, which was the tremendous benefit to the community identified in the original application process.
Any other comments? Commission, questions? Action?
I would make a motion to approve the application.
Second.
Motion is second, further comments? Call the roll.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Heisey.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on, consider a motion to authorize the sheriff's office to purchase six Ford F-150 responder vehicles through Iowa State Bit holders. Stevers Ford, Stivers Ford. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. This morning in front of you, I have a request.
This morning in front of you, I have a request to purchase six Ford F-150 responder vehicles. This is our annual patrol vehicle purchase that we have budgeted funds for in fiscal year 2025. When we look for patrol vehicles, we are very frugal when we are looking for what bids are out there. We compare state of South Dakota, city of Sioux Falls, state of Minnesota, state of Iowa, because we want to make sure that we are getting the most value for the money that we are using from Minnai County. The vehicles that identified our best use for our patrol deputies is the F-150 responder vehicle. That's what they call their F-150 pickup truck. It's got the capabilities and the four-by-four drives that we can use in the winter months or when the roads become really muddy. So we've contacted Iowa, the state of Iowa, they've got the, the bid warder is the Stivers Ford in Waukees, Iowa. They have agreed to honor the state of Iowa price for Minnai County for us to purchase vehicles through them at the price of $48,282 per vehicle. They have an existing bid, it's still awarded. One thing of note with this, it was kind of interesting, the timing of it is the bid was for 2024 through Stivers, but then it also carried over into 2025. There was no changes from 24 to 25, both on price and the vehicle itself from Ford. Stivers Ford called last week and said, hey, heads up, I know you guys are looking for some 25s. I've got three 2024 models that are here on the lot right now that were originally slated for another agency. They kind of overbit a little bit what they wanted to purchase, so there's three vehicles that are exactly what we wanted to get. He goes, I can sell those three now, and then three of them are the 2025s. I said, well, how long are we looking if I want all 2025s? He goes, you're probably not going to see your vehicles if production and manufacturing and supplies hold, which they're not sure with current taxing and tariffs and whatnot. You probably won't see those till maybe mid-August. The problem we run into is if we wait, production usually switches over from model years around that fall timeframe, and we've been burned before in the past where we waited and waited, and then all of a sudden the manufacturer said, hey, by the way, we're switching over the year from the model from 25 to 26, and you have to pay us more. So with this option here, for the same price, we're actually going to be looking to get three of the vehicles as the 2024 models and three of them as the 2025s. They're both the same exact cookie cutter. They didn't change anything between the years. The price is the same. So with your authorization that we're requesting to purchase six vehicles, that's kind of what we're looking for for the total package amount.
All right. Public comment on this agenda item. Commission, questions? Action.
Mr. Chair, morning, Captain. Just curious, are the six vehicles that are being purchased, are they replacing vehicles you already have within the department? Is this an increase in total vehicles department-wide?
Good question. So they are replacement of existing patrol vehicles. When we ask during the budget process for how many vehicles we are looking for in the next future year, one of the questions asked is, well, which vehicles are replacing? The, the answer at the time is, I'm not sure yet, because when you budget a year and a half in advance, I'm not sure which vehicles are going to be in the worst shape, highest miles, most mechanical failures. But these will be six patrol vehicles that are going to go online to take six patrol vehicles off. Now, they might have use elsewhere in the county. Again, we, we squeeze as much as out of these vehicles as we can. They might be utilized by our detective division, our civil division, or we also do cooperate quite frequently with other county entities. I know Safe Home has gotten vehicles from us, Human Services has received vehicles, JDC has received used patrol vehicles because they do have some squeezable life left for in-town transports versus the responder needs that we need in the county.
And, and one follow-up question. How old and how many miles does it take for a vehicle to get replaced typically? Are we talking, you know, three, four, five years or, or older?
Mileage, years can sometimes change. It depends if it is assigned to a specific person versus a fleet patrol vehicle. But generally, we try to swap out vehicles when they are around, we're seeing around 130,000 to 150,000 miles. They're starting to get worn, a little more used up by then, warranties are done and over with, but that's kind of what it is. So some of these vehicles, if they go straight to patrol, they're, they're seeing 130,000 miles within three, three and a half years. If sometimes if we can utilize it elsewhere between like a school resource officer or sergeant, we might make it into four or five years before we hit that mile marker.
Gotcha, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Authorize the chair to sign a funding agreement between Minnai County and Wall Lake Township for rural access infrastructure funding. Good morning, Jacob.
Morning, Commissioners. Jacob Mars, County Highway Department. This agreement with Wall Lake Township awards, you already awarded the rural access infrastructure funds in January at your first meeting. This agreement with them just explains how we're going to divvy up funds and when they're responsible to turn those funds back in if they don't use all of them. We, this is an 80/20 grant. Once we receive their contract with their contractor, we give them 30% upfront so that they can help float the project. So I would just request that we approve that agreement.
All right. Public comment on this agenda item. Commission, action. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Call the roll.
Izzy.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Authorize chair to sign a funding agreement between Minnai County and Logan Township for rural access infrastructure funding.
Same mechanism, this is in agreement with a township, so that we just have some guidelines on how that funding is to be used and some rules in place for construction, what type of guidelines they need to follow. So this one's with Logan Township for a, an amount of $287,960.
All right. Public comment? Commission, action.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion is second, call the roll.
Kipli.
Aye.
Izzy.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Authorize chair to sign the SD Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement between Minnai County and the South Dakota Department of Transportation for the replacement of structure 514940. Jacob.
This is a big grant that we were recently awarded. We applied for four grants right at the first of the year, two, two replacement grants, two rehabilitation grants. We were awarded one replacement grant. The second replacement grant, according to their big scores, we missed by just under two points. So maybe, maybe helping out in the, if we did something with our wheel tax, we might be able to gain a couple extra points on that item, so we'll talk about that at a future commission meeting. This grant is for structure 149140, which is just southwest of Crooks. It's currently our only posted structure on a county road, and it is in our budget for 2026 to replace. The grant amount is for $814,500, which covers 80% of construction as well as 80% of any construction engineering or inspection that has to happen during the project.
Public comment? Question, you said it's in our budget for 2026?
It is.
Okay, so it would be done this year then, or is there funding for this year?
We can talk about that, yeah. If we have available funding in our budget, we could put it out for bid this year and allow a construction date of 2025 or 2026. The contractors are really full right now, but if that's something the commission would entertain, I would very much be interested in getting that bid as.
If you think we could get favorable bids, I could see where that would make sense, but if the contractors aren't hungry, we're probably going to pay a little more.
Yeah, and for the last three years, the bridge projects that we've put out, we've put two-year completion dates on them just because there have been, there's been a lot of work out there for, for bridge replacements.
Okay, okay. Other comments? Action.
I would just say that in the bids that Jacob's received so far this year have all been under the budgeted forecast. The contractors are interested in getting more work.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, call the roll.
Kipli.
Aye.
Izzy.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Authorize chair to sign Amendment 1 to the Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement between Minnai County and South Dakota Department of Transportation for the preliminary engineering of structure 5160199 replacement.
This is a professional engineering services agreement with, technically our agreement is with the state of South Dakota, but Civil Design, Inc. is the company that the state hired to do the preliminary engineering or type, size, and location study for this structure. The structure is on La Mesa, just in the, on the west side of Sioux Falls. And when they got into doing their analysis for how much water there was in that area and when it went over the roads, we ended up having to look at two different design standards. One is the county design standard, which is a 25-year overtopping. The other design standard is 100-year, which would be the city of Sioux Falls, and they plan on changing up their road network in that area quite a bit. But in order to do further analysis on this bridge, to make sure it's built correct for the future, this 11,842 is outside of the original scope. The DOT is not willing to up their grant agreement with us, so this would be strictly Minnai County's responsibility if we're willing to move forward with that work.
Commission. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. I have a question. So you mentioned, you know, with the city, this probably will be a city street within the next XDX years, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, we don't want to build a bridge, they tear down and replace. How, how do we coordinate that?
We don't. So a couple of different ways to coordinate that. So we are working with the city of Sioux Falls on this project. When we meet with the engineer, we're also meeting with the city at the same time to make sure that their design standards are being considered. If we were to put this in as a precast box culvert, it could just be added on to, you could either add additional cells adjacent, or you could extend the bridge out for a wider section of road, and that's, that's the route we're looking to move forward with.
Okay, so we do coordinate that work with them. Good to hear, thank you. Call the roll.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Izzy.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Jacob. A briefing of the unaudited 2024 financial results and publication of unaudited annual report, a lot of unauditing going on here. Good morning, Susan.
Susan Beeman with the auditor's office. We have a, a number of different reports that we'll run through this morning, and they are all unaudited. Later this year, we will have an audit by the Department of Legislative Audit, at which time then we'll get our audit report issued, usually by the end of September is when we will see that happening. So keep in mind, all of this is unaudited, so we'll kind of go through this and, so we'll start with just an overview of what we'll be talking today. The first thing we'll talk about is our annual report, and then, and then secondly, we'll go through the fund operating results. We'll go through the major funds in detail, and then we'll just have a few brief comments on the non-major funds that we have, and then we'll overview the statement of cash flows. So specifically on the annual report, what you'll see is, this is required by SDCL, so we are required to publish this in the newspapers by the end of the month. Additionally, we will put this on our external website on, under the auditor's financial section, so you'll be able to see this out there as well as the public can. A few key numbers from this report for all funds. Our revenue was just over $142 million with our expenses being 100, just under 132 million. We do have long-term debt outstanding of $97.7 million. So this is the actual report, a lot of numbers, kind of small. I won't go through this in detail. When we get into the fund sections, you'll, we'll have some more dialogue on those specific funds, but I'll just pause there if there's any questions about what will be published before we move on. So we'll start with our general fund. So general fund predominantly is funded with property taxes as well as a number of other intergovernmental revenue and charges for services and things like that. So this year, we did see revenue exceeding our budget by about 9.3 million, and expenses were under budget by about 13 million. You will notice that we'll have carryovers of around 1.4 million that will be discussed later on. And then just for the third bullet point, before we move on to the details on the results, just a reminder that the American Rescue Plan Act funding that we have received back in '21 and '22 continued to have favorable results, impact on our general fund operations. But to remind you, the funding for operations is now complete. We will not have any of this funding available in 2025. So that net impact of how ARPA has helped us will be about, about $8 million of additional expenses that will now have to be funded with, with general fund revenue streams. So just as we go through this, keep that in mind that the ARPA dollars are fully expended for operations. So a few things, and I'm going to skip this slide because we'll talk through this as we look at the numbers on this next, on the next report. I'm going to make this a little bigger so we can all see it. So a couple of things just to remind you as a start. So this original budget column, you'll see that we had $80 million of original budget and about $85.9 million of expenditures for expenses exceeding budget of about, just under $6 million. So just to remind you, when we did the 2024 budget, part of what helped fund that was the ARPA dollars. We had discussed how we should approach budgeting with those ARPA dollars with our auditor back in 2022 when we start, were first starting to expend this, because we had so many dollars from the general fund that we were covering temporarily with ARPA, they really encouraged us to keep those expenses within the budget, within the general fund, because we knew they'd be coming back. So we factored that in, knowing that we would have money coming in to offset that. So just keep that in mind as we go through. So when we move over then in the revised budget, that includes carryover expenses and things like that. So that's that adjustment between original and revised. So for actual, we had just under $91 million in revenue, so that variance for on the revenue side is about $9.3 million to budget. So going down through this, a few things that we'll go through, again, that federal grant revenue is those ARPA dollars that we predominantly knew that were coming, that was part of this factor here. One thing that was very surprising to us with our bank franchise was about $1.5 million over budget. We've never had bank franchise amount of 3.2 million, so we had budgeted around 1.8 million, and so it far exceeded what we expected. The previous year of bank franchise was under 2.1 million. So that's a very difficult revenue source to predict, it just comes from the state, so we have no control over that. Interest income, we did anticipate this being high. What we have noticed, the rates did go up throughout 2024, so this was higher than we anticipated, but what we are seeing, because rates have gone down from starting last fall to now, we have seen about a 20% decrease in our, our interest rate, so we do anticipate this coming back down. Additional revenue that we, was a decline from budget, you'll see juvenile housing revenue of $365,000 decrease from budget. In my discussions with Jamie Grabett, that is mainly due to the fact that we've used more of our bed days for Minnai County kids, so we've had less availability for bed rentals. And then as we go forward, border prisoner fees of, were exceeded budget by 2 million. Again, the jail census has been stable, and so the jail has been able to increase some bed rentals predominantly to the U.S. Marshal Service, so that has been able to help subsidize our revenue. And again, this was not anticipated to that level. Additionally, we had opioid settlement revenue that was unanticipated of about $300,000 that we did recognize. We knew we were getting revenue, but we did not have a good way to estimate that. We do have a better estimate now, and we do have that built going forward into future budgets, but the prior two years, we had 90,000 and 60,000 approximately in the previous two years, so we didn't really know how much dollars were coming in in '24. But now with the data we have received from the state, we have a much better idea of how to budget this going forward. Additionally, juvenile diversion, they increased that, those rates on that, so we had a two, about a little over $200,000 increase in juvenile diversion dollars. And then additionally, there was a one-time allocation for public defense that, of additional $900,000 in revenue. So this is on the revenue side of things. I'll just maybe pause there to see if there's questions before I move on the expense side. And we do have a few people in the audience on the, from the jail side of things and JDC, if you have questions that you want more details on. JDC, if you have questions that you want more details on.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Susan, I do have one quick question, more of a clarification. Um, it says public defense allocation HB 1057. Is that a bill that was recently passed or that's been enforced? What is that referring to exactly?
Um, that was the funding source for those dollars, um, and it was a one-time allocation from the state. Um, I'm not sure, um, the timing on when that was approved.
That's true.
Um, but it, it, it is not anticipated to proceed, to continue on.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then moving on to the expense side, um, we're going to break this down into two areas. Um, one is personnel, um, and one is just all the other expenditures. So we did see savings to budget of about seven point four million dollars on, um, on personnel. Again, four point one of that was ARPA, again, part of the number that we talked about, about, um, previously. Um, and then insurance holidays, we had four insurance holidays, um, for the employee health insure, health and dental insurance due to, um, favorable, um, balances within the health fund. Um, that is very, again, also unpredictable. And then we had unfilled positions that totaled about seven hundred and forty thousand. The predominant, uh, makeup of that unfilled positions is the fact that the, the sheriff's department was able to delay hiring fourteen new FTEs for the expansion into UC3 due to the stable census. And then additionally, um, about five point seven million dollars on the expense side. Again, ARPA is two point one of that. Um, and then there's, um, just varying expenses here, um, expense savings. The one that I will point out, um, is on the human services hospital, um, that are medical claims that we, um, pay to, um, for people that apply for funding for medical claims at the hospitals. Um, that decrease in budget, um, the human services department really attributes to Medicaid expansion. There's more people in our communities able to qualify for Medicaid, so that has resulted in a decrease in expenses for the county. So, um, I'll pause, pause there before we move forward. Um, again, um, we have about one point three million dollars of carryover supplements that you'll be considering at a, at the April 1st meeting. Um, we wanted to just highlight, um, because we, we, um, know those, um, there was a lot of information on that previous slide. What we wanted to do with this slide is just really highlight the areas for you as a commission, um, so that you know, when we move forward into the future for 26 budgeting as well as 25 results, what does that look like? How much of what we saw for favorable items in 24 will that carry forward into 26? Um, so first off the bat, um, that, the two first items, ARPA and that public defense, that's nine million dollars. We know that that won't be reoccurring. So we can remove that from our thoughts as we move forward, knowing that those dollars we can't plan for for 26. Additionally, um, employee insurance premium holidays of a million. Again, we don't budget for those. Um, we've had many years where we've had no holidays. Um, so again, we budget based upon actual claims. Um, so this really is an unanticipated as well as very unpredictable if and when that will happen. Um, again, bank franchise of one point five million, again, a very difficult revenue stream to predict. Um, do I think we'll increase our 26 budget up? Yes. Um, but I don't think we'll be anticipating three point two million again. Um, but it's very hard to predict what that will be. Um, again, the next item, um, investment income, um, I do anticipate we'll increase investment income for budgeting for 2026. Um, interest rates, like I said, have come down already about twenty percent from where we were last year. Um, and it is estimated or predicted from analysts that they will come down, but your guess is as good as mine what the market will do. And then additionally, the last two items are related to the jail, um, that border prisoner revenue that exceeded budget by two million. Um, jail leadership has indicated that we should not anticipate the levels to what we saw in 24 to happen again, as well as just that timing of the UC3 expansion. It really will be based upon the sheriff's department's, um, analysis on when that's needed. So we just wanted to highlight these items that these are really, either will not reoccur or the unpredictableness of when they will happen or not happen. So I'll just pause there before moving forward. And like I said, we do have a few people in the audience if you want more dialogue in any of that.
Mr. Chair, can we just talk briefly about the UC3 expansion? It seems like that would cut both ways in the sense of we would obviously have the increased expenses, but would we, would we also still keep our federal relationship with the marshals that if any of those beds are available, we'd get revenue too? So I, I could see it cutting both ways, but if Deputy Gromer has some thoughts.
Chief Deputy Gromer will, um, assist me in answering this, but as part of the forecast, we did increase expenses for UC3 as well as we did adjust income as well, but, um, he'll have more details, so.
So yes, the short answer to your question is yes. As we increase staffing, those revenue numbers will be able to increase correspondingly. The best case scenario you get out of increasing rental beds with increased, increased staffing will be a wash. Um, but, a- and that's the best case scenario. It, it's really all contingent on how fast the population of Minnehaw County inmates grows. And, um, we follow, I mean, I follow it daily, which doesn't tell a whole lot from a daily perspective. Um, where we really look at it and where you really see it is on a monthly chart to watch it ebb and flow from month to month. And what we've seen over the last two years for sure is that it's holding pretty steady. So those Minnehaw County populations are holding pretty steady. Susan and the warden and I actually have a meeting later this afternoon where we really want to talk about trying to dial in, okay, where are we going to have to make this decision to expand? How far out are we realistically going to be able to push that? As well, while we do that, we want to make sure we're maintaining rental capacity to use that jail as efficiently as possible. Um, we function best when we're at about eighty-five percent of our six hundred and three beds. So you're looking at what, five fifteen-ish? Um, so that's the number we want to try to meet in the jail, the jail population to, to utilize our current staffing as efficiently as possible. So what we do with that is flex the number of rental beds we're able to offer to maintain that five fifteen. Does that make sense? If we increase Minnehaw inmates up to four hundred, well, obviously we have to reduce that rental bed, which impacts that revenue number. Increasing staffing allows us to increase the revenue number back up, but obviously increases our cost correspondingly. So we, we really are making a concerted effort to not pull the trigger on this expansion until it's absolutely necessary, keeping in mind, we also have, well, we don't have an obligation, we do realistically need to meet some need for rental beds for the marshal service and some of the other entities. So that's kind of the line we try to walk on that.
Yes, I guess we're just establishing there's various trade-offs, but we're, we're not really in the business. It's not a for-profit enterprise. At best, we kind of break even on some of these propositions.
However we slice it, we're not going to make money.
Yeah.
What, where we start to gain on that revenue side is if our numbers hold steady and we're able to maintain rental beds above what we projected. That's where we see the revenue increase come in without any additional costs.
Yep. Thank you.
Yep.
Jeff, can I ask you a question? I'm sorry. Part of your exercise program going back.
That's okay. I need to get steps in anyways.
Can you tell me if you've heard anything from the feds about if there's going to be any changes in the reimbursement rate?
We will be negotiating another contract with them. I believe it's later this year. I'd have to check with the warden on the exact timing on that, um, which will cause an increase in the reimbursement rate. That, how we, the, the federal government, it's called an IGA agreement, and they have a whole formula that Susan works with us very closely on to plug in all of our budgeted numbers and expenses that can be directly attributed to those federal inmates. Um, for example, we figure in the onsite medical care that's provided. Any federal inmate that would get sent out to the hospital for a same-day surgery or something like that, that's billed directly to the feds, so that gets removed from our budget number in the calculation of that rate. But that rate will, will increase from where it's currently at, which is a hundred and twelve dollars. So it will go up from that number. Without going through the exercise, I can't tell you how high it'll go up. And I hate to throw out a guess of a number that, then we won't meet it, but it will be definitely higher than a hundred and twelve.
Okay.
Which also obviously changes the, the formula and the calculations.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
Uh, and one last point just to mention on, um, on the dollars, you know, since we did have, um, revenue exceeding budget, just to remind you, back in December, um, we did assign fifteen point five million dollars within the general fund for future public safety needs. So that was in recognition, knowing that our revenue was coming in higher than anticipated, our expenses were lower than anticipated. So that was an action that you as a commission authorized in December. So that ties this together. So I just wanted to remind you of that. Okay? And then moving on to the next fund, um, is the highway fund. Um, our revenue exceeded budget by about one point four million dollars. Um, our expenses were under budget by five point four million. Um, those are, um, that, that might seem high for an under-budget, uh, number. It is not abnormal within the highway department just due to the na- the nature of multi-year contracts that they experience. So you can see that we do have, um, carryover requests of five point four million that you'll be considering on the first. Um, so this is, um, I won't go through this in as much detail as the general fund. This is all, again, all is specific to highway. Um, you'll see that, again, re- um, revenue exceeded budget by one point four million dollars. You can see the makeup of that. Again, interest income was a sizable, um, in- increase for, um, the highway fund as well, because interest on their funds are allocated to them as well. That does not stay in the general fund. Um, and then, um, they did, uh, the majority of this federal grants was a combination between, um, some FEMA funding as well as, um, some of the, um, ARPA funds hit the highway fund as well. Um, and as we move down into the expense area, you'll see some savings of about two hundred and eighteen thousand. Again, the highway fund would have also experienced those four insurance holidays, so that's where you'll see a savings on the group insurance. Um, and then the various savings on the different, um, expenditure line items that will mainly go into that carryover request. Um, if you have any specific questions, um, Jacob is here. Um, if you have more, um, questions, he maybe could speak to things in more detail. Moving on to the building fund, um, building fund, um, revenues exceeded interest as well, um, uh, excuse me, revenues exceeded budget by about one point eight million, which is again, interest income being the most i- favorable item within that category. And then we had expense savings of about three million dollars. Again, carryover request will be about three point four million that you're going to be considering. Um, so again, this is the same, same view of the slide that you've seen on the previous two. Um, you can see interest income makes up a large amount of that interest, uh, um, on the income side of things. The items that you'll see here, um, on the expense are just the individual items that, that were, um, uh, savings to budget. Um, a couple, few things to note, um, many of these will be part of your carryover requests, a few that, um, may, that won't. Um, one would be the JDC roof replacement. That was budgeted as part of 2024, but obviously since we're constructing a new, uh, juvenile justice center, that won't be carried into 2025. Um, and then we always have a budget for deductibles. Um, unfortunately, we didn't need to use those insurance deductibles in 24. So I'll just pause there. If you have any questions, again, carryover will be about three point four million for your consideration.
Susan, I guess my only question, when I look at debt service, we've got it from the building fund, we've got it from the general fund. Why do we have de- debt service from so many different areas?
So there, the two areas that we have debt service, um, that are true like bonds. Um, the debt service that you see in the general fund and the emergency management fund are related to leases. Um, and that's just the, um, a mechanism of the accounting requirements of how we handle leases. Um, the debt service that you're seeing in the building fund and the bond redemption fund are true, um, true loans that we have taken out bonds, that we have taken out that we have to repay.
Okay. So when it's on the building fund, we, we're actually able to use the building fund levy to obtain a bond at that.
There are three pieces of debt that are serviced out of the building fund. Two are serviced with just the, the general building fund levy. Uh, one, we have an opt-out for, um, and that's very small, um, and that will be paid off, I believe, in 26. Um, and then that payment goes away and the opt-out goes away at the same time. So the net impact on that fund will be zero.
Okay.
Um, but the two other pieces of debt that are paid for out of the building fund are being paid for with the property tax levy within the building fund. So we don't have a separate levy or, uh, we did not increase the levies to pay for those debt.
Do you know what they are and how long they last?
Uh, they are, I believe they're the highway shop and equalization building remodels.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And then, um, moving on to the ARPA fund, this one is pretty, pretty ba- um, self-explanatory in the sense that, um, we had nine million dollars of, um, revenue, um, and nine million dollars of expense. So the expenditures were just covered with revenue. Um, where you see the budget to actual is when we have to put the budget in as part of the budget hearing in December. I don't, we don't have all of the numbers identified yet because we're still processing payments and such throughout the end of the year. So we have to estimate some of those. So that's predominantly why you're seeing some variance to budget there. But as you can see, revenue equals expenses on the actual side. Um, as far as carryover goes, we have just under one point one million dollars left, um, to spend for ARPA, and that's going to be the three projects that will be completed in 2025. That's going to be the emergency response infrastructure project. Those are the towers that the sheriff's department is working on. A public defender ventilation improvement project in that building, and then the courthouse renovation, um, to construct a new court courtroom. Those would are the three projects that will make up our, our, our ARPA dollars to be spent. Okay? Uh, moving on to the capital projects fund, um, I'm going to just push to this side, um, as we talk through this. Um, you'll see that the revenue that we have coming in, that really is interest income. Um, predominantly, um, that is the interest income on the juvenile justice center bond. Again, that interest income is required to be used for the purposes of JJC. We can't use that on other projects or anything like that. There is a small amount of that money that would, uh, of that interest income that would be off of some remaining dollars from the, um, um, from some of the other projects that we did, but not prod- not a major amount. Um, as we get into the expense section, we had, um, thirty-four million dollars, um, under budget. Again, that is just due to the nature of how we budget for the, the, the capital projects. We budget for the full project in the year that it was approved, and then it's moved, carried over as we move forward. So you'll be, um, considering carryover of about thirty-four million dollars, which the majority of that is the juvenile justice center. There are a few dollars for the highway shop in that number, but the majority of that is JJC. And then, uh, moving on to the bond redemption fund, uh, the bond redemption fund is the, the, uh, purpose of the bond redemption fund is for levying dollars to service debt. So there are the, the two main pieces of debt in, in this fund, um, is the, the jail remodel and expansion back in, uh, the late 2017 to 2019 timeframe and the JJC bond. Um, and so, um, again, this fund essentially, um, worked as intended, um, a slight increase in, in revenue, um, from budget, and then a slight decrease in expenses. Um, this thirty-six thousand of JJC interest actually was covered by the capital projects fund, um, because of interest that we had earned over there. So no carryovers for consideration in this fund. So I'll just pause there before moving on. As we get into the next slides, I'm not going to, um, go through these slides in detail just because there's, we do have thirteen major, non-major funds. I have them listed there. Um, you'll notice on those thirteen slides, there's not a lot of details on those slides predominantly because those funds are really single-purpose funds. So for example, um, E911 fund, the only thing that, that's in that fund is E911, um, domestic abuse, just domestic abuse funds. Um, so if you have questions about those in more detail, we can certainly go through and discuss any of those that you may have. We do have carryover requests for two of the funds, um, emergency management and rural access funds. Um, two things I'll, I'll make a comment on, COSAP, is, um, that fund was completed in, um, early of January when we transferred out that, the remaining cash in that, that we had funded that with from general fund. Um, so you won't see that continue as we move forward since that grant is completed. And then rural access fund, the state gave us our last distribution of rural access infrastructure funds, um, in 24. So those remaining dollars will be expended throughout 25, and, um, you saw some of those item, those contracts on the agenda earlier today from highway. So I anticipate rural access fund 2025 will be the last year for that unless there's some funding changes at the state level. So I'll just pause there before moving on to cash flow. Okay? And I am not going to go through the cash flow in detail, because, again, it's a bunch of numbers on the sl- on a slide. We can go through them in detail if you really want to. But as you go through, what you'll see on, on this first slide, again, this is our non-major funds. And you can see the, the, the funds that we've just ran through here, and then there's a column for all other funds, that all other funds column is the thirteen non-major funds. And on the second page is the detail of those non-major funds, if you wanted to see them. The cash that, the cash, changes in cash flow between the funds are very consistent with the operating results. So you'll see, you know, like, general fund and highway, did it go up? Where you saw ARPA and capital expenditures go down, because those are expense-driven funds. As ARPA is fully expended in twenty-five, that will go, that will be completed. Capital projects funds will continue to be decremented as we make payments to the contractor and other service providers for that project. So I'm not going to go into any more detail on this unless you guys have questions. Okay? So this was just a briefing, so I don't, unless you have more questions, we'll move on to the next agenda item.
No, I guess, go ahead, Cole.
Mr. Chair, one quick question. You had mentioned, actually, I probably asked this earlier in your presentation, kind of got past me. You had mentioned three point four million dollars when referring to carryover dollars. Is that the total amount or just one bucket?
So the carryovers that will, will be brought to you for consideration will be brought forward by fund, but there'll be details within each fund, so.
Do you have an idea of the, the total amount of carryover dollars?
I do, and we can discuss that on the next agenda item.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess fair to say, Susan, that we, last year's budget, we anticipated spending six million dollars out of our cash reserves. We not only didn't spend that, but we added another, how much?
We actually anticipated not spending any reserves, so that, that deficit that we had in the.
We budgeted for cash applied.
We did, but that was offset with planned ARPA dollars. So that was part of our factor when we did the budget. We knew that we had ARPA dollars coming in to offset that. So that was a known variance to budget as we moved forward. But as I indicated, that's completed. We will not have those dollars available as we move forward.
All right. Moving on, authorize the auditor to post notice of budget hearing for April first, twenty twenty-five for carryover and other budget supplements.
Yes, today, we asked your approval to authorize the auditor to post notice of a hearing to be held on April first to consider carryover and other twenty twenty-five budget supplements. We have just over one point four million dollars in the general fund for consideration and forty-four point two million dollars in special revenue funds. I'm aware that special revenue number seems large, but predominantly, that is the juvenile justice center construction project. So as you move forward through this packet, we won't go through these in detail today because the public hearing will be happening on April first, but you'll have the de- you have the details here within your packet for your review. So again, you'll see all the different details by, by, by department within each fund for your consideration, as well as highway has the various projects for your consideration on the, the highway fund, and then as we go forward. So, and then within the packet, you'll have memos from each of the departments explaining their request in more detail. We do try to have many, a number of the departments here on the first, and so if there's any questions that you have that you would want us to make sure that we can address on the first, please let us know, and we'll make sure to have a representative here. But again, today, we won't go through these in detail, but just ask your authorization to post, for us to post that notice of budget hearing.
Okay. I didn't take public comment on the last agenda item. Anybody for that one or this one? All right, moving on then, I need a motion to set the date of hearing for April first.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Susan. Authorize the chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaw County and the Sioux Empire Triage Center, the link, using twenty twenty-one surplus and twenty twenty-three Safety and Justice Challenge grant funds in the amount of eighty-two thousand three hundred and two dollars and sixty-one cents.
Hey, good morning, Tom Greco, Commission Administrative Officer. So there is, there's a fair amount of money remaining in the twenty twenty-one and twenty-three Safety and Justice Challenge grant funds. Of that eighty-two thousand three hundred and two dollars, we recommend that it be allocated to the Sioux Empire Triage Center, the link, to help, to assist with the hiring of staff and/or obtaining other technical assistance to directly serve the link. Just by way of some background, number one, with regard to the grant dollars that remain from the twenty-one and twenty-three grants, there were lesser, less than anticipated costs associated with those two grants, particularly when it came to warrant resolution court salaries, but also just some travel and some other programming items that were budgeted for during those two cycles, but the costs, again, were lower than anticipated. So with that extra, with those additional funds that were remaining, the Safety and Justice Challenge Implementation Team, which is a consortium of various organizations from the county, the city, and also the courts, did sit down and posit and look at some alternatives for uses of this surplus money, and it was determined in coordination and discussions with folks from the link that this allocation would be probably the best use. And there is, there is a direct tie between the MacArthur grant funding and the, the link. As a matter of fact, the genesis for all of our MacArthur funding over the last nearly ten years started out with MacArthur funding to the link, then there's been a relationship between the link and SJC for some time. About two years, or about a year ago, a technical assistance team did come and visit the link and identified perhaps one of the areas that can use additional funding and, and perhaps manpower, so to speak, would be this technical assistance or permanent staff to assist sort of in the strategic direction of the link. So the request today is to approve this agreement, and this agreement would take grant dollars. Again, it's not Minnehaw County general fund dollars or other fund dollars, or taxpayer dollars, I should say, it is grant funding. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Public comment. Commission, questions, action? Commissioner Gibley.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Minnehaw County, our annual obligation is four hundred thousand dollars or so to the link. Is this in addition to this?
That is correct.
This is in addition. Okay, thanks for that clarification. I'll make the motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second. Call the roll.
Gibley.
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heisee?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Authorize chair to sign an agreement between Minnehaw County and the Think Three, Think Three D to administer the Bridges Program and Staff Training in the County Jail using Safety and Justice Challenge Grant Funds in the amount of ninety-five thousand dollars.
Okay, so this is the most recently awarded MacArthur grant, and the county, just a few weeks ago, entered into an agreement with the MacArthur Foundation to receive two hundred fifty thousand dollars over the course of the next two years. Among the programs that are included is the Think Three D's Bridges Program over in the jail. We, we've talked about this before, but essentially, Think Three D will continue to build upon what they've already been doing within the MacArthur Foundation process through their Leaders of Tomorrow program. This program is, is different specifically because it includes work within, within the jail. What this agreement does, it's a professional services agreement, and will allocate about forty-seven thousand, well, forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars per year, this year and next year, for Think Three D to conduct four total sixteen-week programs with inmates at the jail. It also provides for staff training, those will occur on staff training days at the jail. Within the memo, I did identify the program outcomes that are associated with the Bridges Program. Think Three D has been a valued partner throughout our entire MacArthur journey and on other matters. Tamian was here earlier, but he did have to leave if any questions had, were required of him, and there's also folks here from the sheriff's office, if you have questions about the program. But this is truly a successful organization and proven program, and I think folks are see, are excited to see it implemented within the jail. This is one of three service agreements. You'll see the additional two within the come, within the coming commission meetings. Subject to your questions, that's all I have.
Public comment on this agenda item.
I'd like to check in on this one if I could. When I was up here earlier, we had talked about the Minnehaw County jail population staying fairly steady. This program, I'm very happy to see Think Three D coming into the jail. This program has proven to be very, very successful. Tamian, some of the work Tamian and his group have done with a lot of these folks is really, really impressive. So I'm very happy to have this group coming in, and this is just another program and a continuation of the many other programs that we've been instituting over the years to try to maintain that Minnehaw County population as safely and as steadily as we can. So I think any benefit we get out of this program, and I'm, I'm really looking forward to see what kind of success we get out of this, to help us continue to maintain those numbers and get people out of jail safely for the community and the betterment of everybody. So that's, that, this is, I just wanted to point out that this is one of the programs, along with all the others that we've instituted over the last number of years, that help us maintain that steady population and are, continue to push off that expansion until we absolutely need to.
And that commentary provided by Jeff Gromer, of course, yeah, okay. I personally have known Tamian for a while, and, you know, just from the, you know, the results speak for themselves, and when you look at recidivism rates and such, and I don't know, some of this doesn't go for people that are getting out, but just the, what happens within the jail too, I mean, it, it's huge. So it's a good program. Additional comments?
Mr. Chair, I would just echo those sentiments and definitely supportive of this. Sorry to see that Tamian had to take off. We've kind of had a long meeting this morning, so I understand. It'd be great to maybe invite him back another time to give an overview of the program. This can maybe double as my liaison report too, because I talked with State's Attorney, Daniel Hager. It's kind of diving into some of the details on, making sure we're just using our definitions of recidivism. I, I think that's usually a three-year window, so some of Tamian's initiatives are too immature to completely measure yet, but as we're getting to that three-year window of some of the, his activities, it would be great to publicize the success and see, I think some of those recidivism rates are, it's not zero, but it's, it's lower than it would have otherwise been, so to Deputy Gromer's sentiment, when we're looking at stable levels in our jail population, if, if we can get recidivism down, that can contain that even better. So I'm definitely supportive of this and would make the motion to approve.
Motion is second. Additional comments?
One question. How often does the county receive MacArthur fund grants? Is, is it once per year, or can we expect more?
This is the last time we will receive grant funding through the Safety and Justice Challenge, so, but we have gone through three other specific cycles for the Safety and Justice Challenge.
And I believe that the county has spent MacArthur funds on similar projects like this to reduce recidivism in the jail. Is, is that true?
It's, it's, it's geared overall towards safely reducing jail populations, and so, yeah, other organizations and our partner organizations throughout this, in terms of service agreements, have generally been Urban Indian Health, Think Three D, and also University of South Dakota's Center for Rural Health Initiatives, who help administer the program. But there are also changes that are made within the county. We, we've used it to fund pre-trial training and, and implement that program and a variety of other things. So kind of to Commissioner Gibley's point, just kind of bringing back sort of a, a, a good rundown of what we're doing with MacArthur at a future meeting would be probably beneficial to the commission.
And I think it's fair to say, too, that MacArthur's focus has shifted in recent years from maybe like the mental health and that type of thing to the jail population. It's always been about reducing the population in the jail, but, and what they target and, and how we go about it is what's kind of changing.
Yeah, and it's all intertwined.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can chime in, but it's just basically repeating what Tom was saying. We've been working with MacArthur and the Safety and Justice Challenge for years, dating back to the early inception of the link when, and the Triage Center, when that's what we were looking at developing was a Triage Center. And it's, it's been a far-reaching program in various other entities, not just within the sheriff's office. I, I think the money's been really instrumental and helpful in developing a lot of these programs we've developed over the years. And again, we keep stressing that these programs have been designed to help us safely reduce or maintain that jail population, and I think what we've seen with our statistics over the years is that it has, it has worked that way. Our jail population numbers are staying fairly consistent. If you look back in our projections, when we were talking about doing the expansion to the jail, we were projected to be expanded and occupying additional space in the jail already. And at this point in time, we're still talking about delaying that expansion. So I, I think when you look at it as an overall, from an overall picture, we've been very successful with Security and Justice Challenge assistance in maintaining that jail population as safely as we possibly can. And that's, it's, from my perspective, it, it has been very beneficial in delaying some of these expansions and slowing the growth of our jail population.
All right. That's in agreement, so I, I have a motion in a second, right? Call the roll.
Gibley.
Aye.
Heisee.
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye, motion carries. We have now the opportunity for public comment. Commission liaison reports. Non-commission discussion, non-action commission discussion. And we have a exec, okay, so I'd look for a motion to enter an executive session for the purposes of SDCL one, twenty-five, two, one, three, four, and six.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, same sign. Motion carries. We'll meet in the room next door.